Good evening. I'm going to call to order a meeting of the LaGrande City Council, regular session, Wednesday, November 3rd. Let everyone know that we are yet again on a Zoom session and all councilors are participating electronically. With that introduction, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Steve Clemmons.
Here.
Gary Lillard.
Here.
John Bozard.
Here.
David Glave.
Here.
Nicole Howard.
Here.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Here.
And Justin Rock.
Here.
Justin.
All right, I'm here.
Hello, it's okay.
I'm mute.
Thanks, Justin. Agenda's okay, Robert? No changes?
Yes, it is, Mayor.
Thank you. We have a consent agenda with two items. First item is approval of the regular session minutes from October 6th meeting and approval of an OLCC liquor license application for the local station. If any councilors want to remove an item, please let me know at this point, otherwise we'll consider the two in one vote. All right, do I have a motion?
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from John and a second from Mary Ann. Roll call vote, please.
Steve Clemmons.
Yes.
Gary Lillard.
Yes.
John Bozard.
Yes.
David Glave.
Yes.
Nicole Howard.
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Yes.
And Justin Rock.
Yes.
Okay. Any public comments, Robert, to be read into record?
Yeah, we have one letter from an EOU student. Stacy will read, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Stacy?
Okay, this letter is from an Ashley Jones. Dear LaGrande City Council, my name is Ashley Jones. I am a student at Eastern Oregon University. I am writing to you regarding the lack of places to shop for clothing in our community. This is my second year living in this beautiful town, and my only complaint would be that it is very difficult to find items of clothing in the area, especially during the harsh winters when driving an hour is not an option. I have done some research and have proposed a solution for you to solve this issue that I know many others would agree upon. Because LaGrande is a college town, putting in at least one clothing store would help build up the economy and positively impact the lives of those who live in the area. Along with that, it would create jobs for not only your permanent residents, but also for college students who need a job that can be flexible with their school schedule. As of now, most people that need clothing either go to Island City, which does not benefit you, or little shops that don't have a very big selection of clothing items downtown. As a solution to this issue, I propose that you and your members look into putting in an off-price department store. This could be TJ Maxx, Marshalls, Ross, any type of store that offers discounted clothing. This would be your best option because it is already a successful chain of department stores that most everyone has either already shopped at elsewhere or has at least heard of. Therefore, the chances of it being successful in LaGrande would be very high. Also, they offer a variety of clothing types for all shapes, sizes, and people. By putting a department store in LaGrande, you could create more jobs and bring more money into the community rather than forcing your residents and visitors to spend their money in surrounding areas. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Ashley Jones. And that is all.
And Mayor, I have reached out to Ashley and kind of given her a little bit of a snapshot of some of the efforts that we've taken in the past and are ongoing.
Okay. And notably, our new economic development person is here. So that's in his bucket of things that he needs to be thinking about. This is one of them. So Timothy, you'll have an opportunity to respond later. Any other items to be read into record? A head shake is fine. Okay. We have no public hearings. We have no unfinished business. Looks like six items of new business. The first one is an MOU between the city and the LaGrande Firefighters Union, Local 924, Chief Cornford. I think this is in Yerba Park.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Yes.
We're requesting tonight that you ratify a decision that Robert made to enter into an MOU with our local union to increase the incentive when we asked him to come in for an out-of-county transfer. We've had a number of requests for these, and it continues to increase. And one of the reasons, one of the challenges we have is our firefighters that are off-duty come back a number of times during their off-duty time, and frankly, they're getting tired. I mean, so we needed to increase our incentive to see if we could get them to come back in for these transfers more often. They're very good about coming in for emergency callbacks and those types of things. These transfers tend to take between five and can take as long as 12 hours to accomplish. And one nice thing about them is they tend to fund themselves. So the income from the transfers would cover this extra expense to incentivize them to come in. So it's kind of a quick overview. If you have questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions for Chief Cornford?
Yeah. Chief, how many times would that, would a person go out, do you think, undoing this on a monthly average?
You know, it's really hard to estimate, but I would, if I had to guess, I would say somewhere between five and eight in a month. It tends to increase in the wintertime because a lot of times lifeflight can't fly. If they're very critical, they'll go by lifeflight unless, of course, we have fog or items that don't allow the airplane or the helicopter to fly.
So then how will this cut into lifeflight? Are they in agreement with doing ambulance over the road, or how does that work?
Yeah, so this, this isn't any kind of a change in procedure. Typically, what the hospital does is they look at the condition of the patient, and they'll ask for an out-of-county transfer by ambulance if it's appropriate for our paramedics to take them. And then if we can't staff the transfer, or if the patient is critical and needs to go by air, then they call lifeflight. So it won't be any change in the current procedure.
Okay. So there are a lot of people. I would assume the ambulance is cheaper for the people rather than lifeflight?
Yes, it's significantly cheaper.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Cornford? All right. Try to remember to do this more often. Do we have any public testimony on this, Robert? All right. Council discussion. Seems pretty straightforward to me, the fact that the call, the transfer services generate revenue, and that can cover this is a good thing. And then it gives, it gives our firefighters an incentive to come back and do this. So if there's no discussion or no conversation on this, I'll entertain a motion.
I move City Council ratify the city manager's decision to sign the attached memorandum of understanding between the city and the LaGrande Firefighters Union, Local Number 924.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Steve Clemmons.
Yes.
Gary Lillard.
Yes.
John Bozard.
Yes.
David Glave.
Yes.
Nicole Howard.
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Yes.
And Justin Rock.
Yes.
All right. Moving on to next motion, next item of new business, it's a resolution, amending Resolutions Number 4755, Series 2019, administrative fees. This one is in Parks and Recs, so Stu Spence, take it or on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay? Good. This is simply a resolution cleaning up a complicated fee structure to rent the kitchen at Riverside Park. So to make the website work and to make this more clear with a better customer experience, standardizing the rate to $75 per rental instead of all the different rates that apply now, which can, can change varying whether it's on a weekend or a weekday or a half day or a full day or whatever. So this just simply cleans it up so we can easily take online registrations and provide a better experience. Are there any questions?
So Stu, I, there were a lot of fee changes going on, and to help me see this better, I made a little table of what, what the fees look like so I could compare the old ones to the new ones.
Sure.
And as I read this out, I hope somebody will take it down. If we, and I'm, I'm really most concerned, interested in when we have the pavilion and the kitchen together. So we're making that connection. The old rate for Monday, per time period, Monday to Thursday was $100, the new one is $150. If it's the whole day, the old rate was $150, and the new one is $175. If we look at Friday to Saturday for a time period, the old rate was $200, the new one is $225. And if we go for a whole day, the old rate was 300, and as I tallied it, the new rate is $275. So we actually, I guess I'm, where I'm trying to get with this is that it seems like the new rates are increasing at different amounts, and in one case going down. And I'm trying to get an understanding why that might be.
Right. It's just because they were established, these were established before my time, and I don't know the methodology used at the time, but they were very inconsistent, as you just illustrated. This, this basically, you charge, I mean, some, some people are going to pay more and some, you know, like you said, some will pay less. So this was sort of a happy average, happy medium to standardize the rate.
Okay. Do we have any idea how much use goes on?
I don't have that in front of me, other than I can tell you that in, in those four months of high-peak use, that pavilion's rented twice a week, including the kitchen. It could be, mostly it's on the weekends, but our usage rate is, is huge at Riverside Park, and it's, it's always busy. I mean, I could get the stats free, but it would take me a little bit.
Right. I guess I would, I mean, I would be more sort of inclined to do something like, the new rate for the pavilion in the kitchen is $25 more than the old rates. So for a time period, it'd be $125 for a day, $175, which would, which would be that. The Friday to Saturday time period would be $225, and then the Friday to Saturday all day would be $325, not a reduction of $25. So anyway, that is, I'm throwing that out there because I think the figures don't make sense to me in terms of, if you're asking for an increase, why would one go up by $50 and the other one, and, and the most heavily-used time go down by 25? So.
Right. So the, the fear to make this work, there's, the website does not have a if and then function. So if it's a Saturday during the day, this is the price. It has to have a standard rate, no matter what day it is. So the standard rate we picked was simply an average of all the rates combined.
Okay. Any other questions for Stu? Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Okay. See, Stu, I was wondering, you also had the Rotary Pavilion, Mack Square, and Bernie Park, all at the same rate. Now Bernie Park's pavilion is so tiny, why would it be the same rate as the Rotary Pavilion, which is larger, and then Mack Square, which of course is a larger space, Stu? It just doesn't seem like Bernie Park really has much of a pavilion anyway.
Yeah, we established those fees in 2019 and standardized all those. We're not proposing to change those. Those have been working fine. The only change in here is the kitchen fee at Riverside Park. So the rest of it, if not, I'm not requesting, those are working just fine. And those are based on what we did in 2019 with all of our research. The demand is so high for pavilions that people are happy to pay the same rate for a smaller space because they want reservable areas.
Okay. Okay. So I would assume if somebody has already reserved one of those, they go by the lower rate versus the, the new rate that will be imposed after tonight if we approve it?
There's, there's no new rates proposed for anything except for the kitchen.
Well, that's what I, if somebody reserved it already, the kitchen for...
Right. It would be from this day forward, exactly.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'm just looking at this again. I, you know, I don't have a problem with it overall. I just think that the increase should be consistent. And I'd hate to see, if there's a demand for this, then why would we, why would we lower, why would we have a lower rate for all day, Friday to Saturday, excuse me, Friday to Sunday? Why would we lower the rate there? And I, my, my only suggestion would be bump that up at least to what it was at 300, or even move it to 325. That would be my own, my only request.
Right. In order to do that, we would just have to bump that 75 to either 100 or 125 per, per rental per day, because we could not change it based on the weekend days. It would have to be consistent throughout all the days of the week.
Stuart, you just, the light bulb just went on.
Okay.
Okay. I got it now. I, I, I see what's going on here. So, all right. Forget everything I've said and move forward accordingly. Any other questions for, for Stu? Public testimony on this, Robert? All right, no public testimony. Additional council conversation or discussion? A motion?
I move that the proposed resolution, amending Resolution Number 4775, Series 2019, establishing fees for park facilities, be read by title only, put to a vote, and passed.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Could someone, please, read the resolution by title only?
Yes, I will do that. Give me just a second. I was writing down who seconded it. Can we confirm who seconded it? I had two.
I think it was Mary Ann, wasn't it? Oh, Nicole.
It was Nicole first.
Okay, that's who I got. Okay. Resolution, okay. Resolution of the City Council of the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, establishing fees for the City of LaGrande Park Facilities, repealing Resolution Number 4775, Series 2019, and all other resolutions or parts of resolutions. series two thousand nineteen and all other resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict here, herewith and declaring an effective date.
All right. We've got a motion. We've had a reading of the title of the resolution by title. Um, a call, uh, ask for a roll call vote, please.
Steve Clemens.
Yes.
Gary Lillard.
Yes.
John Bozard.
Yes.
David Glave.
Yes.
Nicole Howard.
Yes.
And Justin Rock.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item of new business is a resolution, uh, considering an annexation of property at one oh two South Second Street, number oh three, period na, a na, A N P, period twenty-one. That was a mouthful. Uh, Mike Boquist, this is a planning thing, so you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. And so this is an annexation of property. It's a essentially a vacant parcel. I think it has a barn on it, but they wanna build a house. Uh, it's in our urban growth boundary. Uh, they need city water and sewer. Our ordinance requires annexation, uh, in order to get those services. And, and so the property owner has requested annexation. Um, and so this is just kind of a routine thing that we, we do a number of times during the year, uh, for development. Um, I noticed in the, uh, council action form, uh, we had a number of versions going around with some address, uh, errors in it that, um, between a one oh two and a one oh eight South Second Street. And I noticed in the motion, I, I did not correct the, uh, the old address or the incorrect address, but this is a one oh eight South, uh, Second Street. Um, so at least if, if you're supportive of this application, uh, this request, uh, make note of that in the motion. It should be one zero eight South Second Street. Uh, do you have any questions?
Any questions from Mike? Mary Ann, this is up near you. Is that correct?
It, well, it is. And I was trying to figure out exactly where it is because I see Miller Drive, which is south of us, but all the houses between us and Miller Drive is already in the city. So I'm not really sure. I don't understand it.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so this property, if you were to continue up Second Street and not turn on Miller Drive, you continue up the hill.
That's what I thought.
Water tanks.
Okay.
Uh, there's, there's a house that shares that driveway with the city. And it's up, up that drive anyway. I don't know, a couple hundred feet or more, um, anyway. And that, that's where it's located. So.
Okay. So it's not Cindy Shears's place then?
No.
She's building a house. Okay.
Yeah.
Cause there's a pasture over there and I was just wondering, is that it? I, I was really confused by looking at the map.
Yes. And no, that's a different project.
Okay. So it's behind, it's between Millers and, or Miller Drive, if you go up Miller Drive to the water, to the watershed, um, reservoir?
Yeah, you kinda go up into the right.
Right. Okay. Got it. Okay. That's what I thought, but I just wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Here.
All right. Any other questions for Mike? Council discussion? Entertain a motion?
I move that the proposed resolution annexing property located at one oh nine, is that, or one oh eight?
One oh eight.
One oh eight, South Second Street be read by title only, put to a vote and passed.
Second.
All right. So we have Mary Ann with, uh, with the motion, uh, Council Bozard with a second. Um, and Sandra, could you read, uh, the proposed resolution by title only?
A resolution of the city council of the city of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annexed to the city of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, specifically property at one oh eight South Second Street, T, uh, T three S, R three A E, section eighteen, tax lot ten thousand five hundred.
All right. Um, we've had, we've got a motion, a second and a reading of the resolution title. Kind of roll call, please, roll call vote, please.
Steve Clemens.
Yes.
Gary Lillard.
Yes.
John Bozard.
Yes.
David Glave.
Yes.
Nicole Howard.
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Yes.
And Justin Rock.
Yes.
You know, Sandra, I'm not sure if I voted on the last one. I don't remember if you called my name.
Mary Ann, I don't think it was called. I almost said something, but nobody else typed in, so I moved.
I missed it completely.
Okay. Well, I vote yes on it anyway.
Okay, on seven B. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Seven B. Thank you.
Apologize.
Thank you for that, Mary Ann. Um, fourth item of new business is approving the La Grande Arts Commission recommendation to authorize the Park and Recs director to enter into a memorandum of understanding with artist Jason Hogg. I'm, I'm assuming that's the way it's pronounced, for the development of a public art piece in front of Cook Memorial Library. Uh, Stu Spence?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, as you can see from the council action forum, the Art Commission has been working on this project uh, for some time now, for a couple of years. Um, the, there was a pretty, pretty extensive process followed out of the, uh, public art policy that we have. They included a request for qualifications that, uh, we got help with from the Oregon Arts Commission drafting and kind of crafting. Uh, that went out to, uh, Umatilla County, Baker County, Willawa County, Uni- Union County. Um, I think, I think the region, uh, is what the Art Commission was, was going for. There were, there were three, I think, uh, qualifications submitted. They decided to go with the top two and request full proposals. Uh, out of those, uh, Mr., Mr. Hogg, I don't know how to say it either, Steve. Um, Hogg's, uh, proposal was selected. Uh, I've included for you the illustrations and mockups of what that might look like, uh, as a part of the public art policy. The Art Commission's in charge of vetting this all the way through to the final design and then off to city council for final approval. I will note that this is not meant for city general fund dollars. This is meant to have a plan that we can go get funded, uh, through grants and donations. Uh, we plan to do that. Most of those grants launch in the early spring or late winter. Um, so we need full approval so we can present our plan to the funders around the state and, and fund this project that will come in around fifty thousand dollars. So with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Questions for Stu? Interesting project. Um, uh, the, 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 the angle of the display pieces, uh, and the, the way they're positioned and provides different images based on where you're standing. I, I, I think that's an intriguing piece. I like the, uh, the historic, um, you know, past, present, future kind of theme to it. Uh, so four, you know, elements or three elements, um, um, for, for the display are. When, the only question I have is, um, if this is grant money, um, did we, did, did we, um, place mark something in this year's budget for this money or how would this, how would this come into the city? Um, usually we do a placeholder for grants and, in the previous, in the, like in May for, for this fiscal year, but, um, that's the only question I have in terms of the funding.
Yeah, that's a great question. Uh, I'm gonna blank on that one. I don't remember, to be honest. Maybe Heather does, but, um, I've, I feel like we did, but I, geez, I just can't remember, Steve. I'm sorry. That was back in February remarks, you know? I'd have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, well, Stu, I was there too and I don't remember. So. Um, I, I don't, it's probably not a big issue, uh, because, you know, grant awards typically don't pl- take place. Probably if you apply for late, you know, midwinter, late, early spring, you may not get it until after our, our next fiscal year starts. So.
Right.
That may not be an issue. So any other, any questions for Stu on the project?
Mayor, if I could, um, I'm showing Arts Commission expenses under grants and donations with a, uh, fifty-six thousand dollar budgeted line.
Yeah, that's it then.
Okay.
So, so yes, we would have room within grants and donations to accept.
Good. Thank you, Robert. And Dave, you had a question?
Yeah, I have. I'll, I'll raise three concerns that I think are, are worth considering here among the council. Um, the, the first is, uh, I, I have a little bit of an issue with perspective art. And I think that was pointed out in the request that I, that I made, that we have what this will look like from the straight on perspective. And I, I mean, I, I'm an optometrist. I'm a vision science scientist. I understand perspective art and I also understand that art is certainly a matter of preference and, and opinion. But, um, the, the major issue with perspective art of this type is that it has to be viewed from a certain angle or else it doesn't make sense and you don't get the appropriate image. And the way that this is set up is that, um, it, it's really the angle is, is coming into or, or exiting the library. Yet the most populated space in the area that this is proposed to go into is actually going to be Max Square and out where the farmer's market is and places like that. And these are the people who are going to be viewing this in at a perpendicular angle, which, which you saw from the image frankly doesn't make sense. You're looking at a jumbled image. You're seeing in effect a double, double segmented images, uh, straight on. I, that's my first concern is that I, I don't care for perspective art, uh, because of that reason. And, and, and especially where we're planting it, you know, it's one thing if it's in a back entryway and not many people, you know, i- if you're kind of forced guided into that, the appropriate perspective, that's one thing. But again, where this is proposed for placement, the majority of people will actually be viewing this from the wrong angle. Um, that, that's the first concern. Uh, this, the second is, um, there is not a cohesive theme to this art. Uh, I actually like the, the concept that, as you mentioned, Steve, the historic aspects. I also like that we're helping to highlight, um, some, you know, maybe historically marginalized, uh, uh, members of, of, you, you know, people who were important and played an important role in building up our community and its history. I like that concept. Um, what I, what I don't care for is again, the, what I view as a, a not cohesive theme. So the two viewed from the front kind of tie in together. The two from the back do not at all. Um, and, uh, I also worry in this, I'll raise the third concern, is that the vivid colors, uh, that are proposed for the backside of this, what would be viewed from people exiting the library. Um, uh, they're pretty bright for a downtown area. Um, and I feel like we, we go to great lengths to create a certain feel or ambiance to the downtown. You know, you, you look around that area, it's, it's, um, they're very earthy tones. We have a lot of brick. You have a lot of other things. And that's a, that's a whole lot of color for that particular area. That I think would be lovely inside of the library. I don't know about on the exterior. I, I worry about how well this will fit in with the other art downtown. And, and then maybe I'll just raise the last point. I, 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 you know, I, I got another couple of opinions on this and, and others shared my same thoughts, the others that I visited with. I feel like, first, I, I, I appreciate the work the Arts Commission has gone to for this, but I feel like this is a very, very public space. Probably the most visible public space that we have in our downtown area. And maybe we should have some broader public input because again, art, art is very much opinion. You kind of like something and you don't. Uh, maybe, maybe we should go to steps to involve some community opinion on the piece the Arts Commission has selected before we proceed with this. Um, just my thoughts.
Thanks, Dave. Anyone else? Mary Ann, I see you're unmuted.
I don't have anything.
Nicole?
Well, I, regardless of whether or not I agree with Counselor Glave, um, and I, I thought it's good. Um, I, I think the reason we put in the process in place the way we did was to prevent a kind of debate about aesthetics at this level. Um, as fun as that would be, um, I just don't think that's our role. And so it sounds like, if I'm understanding correctly, the process is the Arts Commission gets to, to go through their, you know, stages of selection. They've done that. It moves on. And I think it would be really, um, you know, inappropriate and kind of offensive to them if we sort of Monday morning quarterbacked here about our aesthetic sense. So I would say we just, it's, this is what's come out. Some people are gonna love it. Some people are gonna hate it. That's art.
Um, Mary Ann, um, I, I, if, if I, if I remember the notes correctly, um, it sounded like the, and I'm, I'm, and I'm asking Mary Ann this because of your involvement with Main Street. It, it sounded, it sounds like the Arts Commission took this process on themselves and Stu can help me with the history. And, and then they went, then they kind of pulled back a little bit and they, and they added to the review process. They added people. And so I thought Main Street was involved, the Chamber was involved. There might've been, I mean, been Arts East was involved. Uh, people from the arts community were, were, and, and the downtown were brought in. Did, Mary Ann, did you have any feedback from, from Main Street folks on this?
The only one I've ever heard anything about it was from Taylor, who's our director. He, he was on the commission and he was, and he was, went to the meeting, some of them. And they were given input on what they had selected. When he was talking to me about it, he told me that it was very exciting and dynamic art. He liked it. And that, I hadn't seen it until today. I, I liked it too. I wondered the colors that, that Dave is talking about. I kind of wonder about that too. I know it's for the children and that. And those are the people coming out of the library will see it. Those from the other side won't see that part unless they go into the library and out. So I, I don't have a real problem with it.
Right.
And the people from Main Street that did, that were involved didn't have any problem with it.
Okay. And, and I appreciate Dave's, uh, um, background and, and knowledge on, on perspective art. I mean, he's, he's got that, he's got sight, if you will, in mind. Um, I wonder though that if, you know, often a piece of art is not necessarily, uh, something that people will try to see just in passing, but they will stop and maneuver themselves to look at something, uh, from the different perspectives. Uh, I can't tell you how many times I've stopped in the parking lot where, uh, I, I know, can't remember what the name of the building is, but, um, it's where the big mural is downtown, um, right around from where, um, Nature's Pantry is. It's on the same building. And you stop and I kind, I don't kind of just gaze and look at it to get a sense of what's there because there's a lot in that mural. And I, in, you know, when people are in Max Square, are, are they gonna take the time to look across? I don't know. Um, when they're in Farmer's Market, um, many of them are, are focused on what's happening in the market itself. So I'm wondering that if, if, you know, I, I respect what Dave is saying, but I don't know that that's necessarily going to be an issue so much as drawing people to the piece so that then they can position themselves relative to the perspective that they need. Um, and I think that's part of the piece of art and the, and the artist's intent. So, Mary Ann?
Yeah, that's what I feel too. If I was at Max Square and I saw it, I'd walk over there to look at it closer. It would draw my eye to it.
Right.
And then I'd wanna walk all the way around it, see all the different angles I could see it.
Right. Well, and I think Nicole's got a good point too. It, I mean, we, we put this process in place to allow the Arts Commission, um, to make these kinds of selections. Um, our role here and our, our really what we're being asked to do is just to approve what they've done so that they can then take it to the next step and general, and, and get money to put it in place. Um, you know, that's, I think that's our role for, for this evening. So, um, any, any other questions, discussions, uh, points you wanna bring up?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Uh, part, part of, part of the design with the tilted angles were security related. Um, there's been some concern about this blocking the view from behind. So enforcement or, you know, law enforcement or others, um, there would be some sort of see-through where, you know, I don't wanna blame teenagers, but loy- some people that are loitering might sneak back there and try to hide out. So part of the design was, uh, intentional for that reason, uh, which, which I thought was a really good idea from the artist and the committee who tried to address that. And the, the library staff are involved in this too, of course, uh, since they see that and deal with that. Um, and then I think Mary Ann alluded to the last point I was gonna make, that the bright art on the back is meant for kids as a, um, this is past present and future. So that's the future panel and exiting the library, uh, as kids is our future. That's why it was intentionally hidden for what David said. Uh, aesthetically, that wouldn't make sense on the front being downtown. So, yeah. So yeah, you guys have kind of made some of my points, but I wanted to mention the security perspective too.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, if not, uh, I'll entertain a motion. Anyone?
I move that we accept the La Grande Arts Commission recommendation and authorize the Parks Direct Director to enter into an memorandum of understanding with artist Jason Hogg or Hoag, whatever, for the development of, of a public art piece in front of Cook Memorial Library.
A second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mary Ann and a second by Nicole. Any additional items or discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Steve Clements?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
John Bozard?
Yes.
David Glave?
No, on the basis of feeling like we should have more public input on it.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
And Justin Rock?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, uh, the fifth item of new business is authorizing agreement between the city of La Grande, the city and the Grand Swim Club and the La Grande High School Swim Team uh, for use of the pool. You're a busy guy tonight, Mr. Spence. This one's yours too.
Yeah, this one is pretty simple and straightforward. Uh, we froze the fees last year. We're freezing them again this year for both groups uh, because of COVID and limited accessibility to the pool. Um, however, we did bring the swim club's uh, fees up in line with the high schools for rental of the pool. You can see that. We also tweaked a little bit of their lane usage time to add the language of up to, because the swim club has been limited in the past, and we wanted to give them an opportunity to um, increase their, increase or decrease their numbers based on what their actual need is uh, in a partnership with us for, uh, based on demand. So if there are lap swimmers that want to swim, they'll be limited to lanes, but there, if they're not lap swimmers, they can increase their lane usage with, upon request. So just a couple of clerical things really. Are there any questions about this?
The only question, oh, the only question I have, Stu, is the fact that lifeguards, if you, for regular swimming, you said two lifeguards are required for every, for the first 25 patrons and an additional lifeguard for an additional 25. But here, there's only one for 40. That seems like a very, the, the ratio seems off to me. And I know that there are swim clubs, so that they, I mean, those people are all swimmers, I recognize that. But is that kind of a limited number of lifeguards for them?
Yeah, this is standard um, procedure for, you know, statewide rules and regulations for pools. This isn't off. Um, and actually, um, swim clubs were not required to have guarded practices up until about a year or two ago, uh, when there was a tragic accident at the Hillsborough Pool uh, at their swim club, there was, there were no guards and uh, somebody drowned. So this, that, this regulation was changed at the state level. We've had it forever. We've never allowed folks in the pool without guards. Um, so we've always been on the conservative side. Um, however, these are just standard numbers that, that pools abide by, and ours are even uh, more strict than the regulations.
Okay. Anyone, any other questions for Stu? Seems like we've gone, I, I've been through a number of iterations of this and it, it, it just, these opportunities give us a chance to fine tune and adjust our, our agreements per uh, any, any state law changes, you know, the, the, the guard requirement now is something that we can work into, into the agreement. Um, questions? A motion?
I move that we authorize the city manager to sign the agreement between the city and the La Grande Swim Club and between the city and La Grande High School Swim Team for the use of Veterans Memorial Pool as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Gary and a second from John. There are no more comments. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Steve Clements?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
John Bozard?
Yes.
David Glave?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
And Justin Rock?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Uh, the sixth and final uh, item of new business is awarding a bid for sanitary sewer rehabilitation. My understanding is this, I, I always love this, the idea of putting a tube inside old pipe and curing it there so that you don't have to dig anything up. So that's, that's a cool thing. Anyway, Kyle, this is, this is your gig.
All right, Mr. Mayor, councilors, what you have is a action request to award the bid and subsequently allowed city manager Stroke to execute contract documents with the apparent low bidder. Uh, this project is a, a whole lot of eight inch main lines. We uh, have switched this year from doing some oversized line and we're concentrating on our, our more regular eight inch lines this year. So there's a very large quantity. It's almost a mile of pipe on this year's contract. Um, as you'll see on the bid tabs, it was, uh, we have one PEC or Planned and Engineered Construction. They're, they're regular in this area. We've had them work for us multiple times in the past. We've always gotten really good reviews for their interaction with the community and keeping services in line and being very informative for our citizens. So we were excited to see them, and we were also excited to see their price because they left $100,000 on the table, which is not usually likely in these bids. So I don't have any concerns that they left anything out. I think it's very odd that they would leave that much on the table, but um, I'm excited to get them here to work if you allow. So you happy to answer any questions either on the technical side or about the bid process?
Questions for Kyle? John?
Yeah, there, I just wanted to address the same thing, Kyle. It just seemed strange to me that there, that $100,000 difference or more. Uh, like you said, I, I don't know if many contractors leave that kind of money on the table. You know, and then the second or even the third bid at 350 some thousand, it just seems a little strange to me.
Yeah, um, one of, one of the benefits I do know is um, I was lucky to travel over to Baker with the mayor recently for one of their uh, meetings where we discussed the quiet zone. During that meeting, I also noticed that Michelle, who is their Public Works Director, awarded a bid for a similar project to PEC. So I do believe we are benefiting a little bit from piggybacking these projects ne- near each other, and we might have gotten a little bit better of a price. Uh, the other, other piece I think the PEC had up on the other bidders is they are very familiar with our system. They've come in, they've seen what our system looks like. Uh, they don't, they don't have a fear and haven't padded their bid thinking that they're gonna have to do some point repairs and dig up parts of the system and eat those costs. So I, I think it's the working relationship and uh, we got lucky that they won another bid in the area.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Don't tell Baker City then, okay?
Oh, I don't. I only tell
Any other questions for Kyle? I'm, I, you know, impressed reading the, the explanation piece that over the last 29 years, we've done uh, 29 miles of the 85. Um, we're, we're sort of catching up to the time period when, when maybe better material was used initially. Um, you know, if I, if I, if I clock this right, um, you know, we're, we're, we're getting back, we're getting up to about 1965 material that we're replacing. So uh, pretty quick, pretty quick, we'll, we'll be into the seventies and, and things will start to look pretty good. And then we'll be back down around, you know, picking it up again, so um. All right, that's, that's, that's a good thing that's going on there, and we save some, save some money by, by accident, I see. Uh, any other questions? Uh, Mary Ann, you're unmuted. Gary, you're unmuted. Questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Um, I'll entertain a motion then.
I move that we award the 2021, 2022 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project to Planned and Engineered Construction Incorporated in the amount of $192,250 as shown in the bid summary, and further that city manager Stroke be authorized to execute the contract documents for the bid for the 2021, 2022 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project.
Second? All right, so Gary uh, made the motion, John second. If there's no additional discussion, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Steve Clements?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
John Bozard?
Yes.
David Glave?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
And Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, good. Uh, question?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Kyle. Um, that finishes our business section of the meeting. Uh, we're into our commentary section. Um, first up is Union County Commissioner Matt Scarfo. Commissioner Scarfo, what do you got for us?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilors. Just some updates for public health. Tomorrow, uh, C H D will be having their vaccination clinic at the fairgrounds between nine and four. They moved them out there because the first booster clinic, they had 500 people show up and it was wrapped around the corner, so they decided to pick a bigger venue uh, to do that. So tomorrow at the fairgrounds, which is Thursday, between nine and four. And also testing, we're still doing testing, and it's also going to be at the fairgrounds due to weather are coming into fall and winter, so the fairgrounds is going to be able to create some cover if it is raining, snowing, sleeting. But it's uh, every Tuesday through December 21st from 10 to 1:00 P.M. Uh, we're, we're looking at possibly picking up another day depending on the OSHA rules that are gonna come out for possibly the, uh, the people that did not get fully vaccinated, like exemptions that need to get tested twice a week. We're gonna look into that. I'll keep you guys updated, but for now, every Tuesday, 10 to 1:00 at the fairgrounds. Uh, that we're trying to obtain a FEMA bus to reach the out, the outlying areas, Elgin Cove, Union, maybe some of the people that cannot come into La Grande to, to get that done. Uh, I know Kerry is working on that right now. I think it's a fantastic idea. We do not have our vaccine vehicle yet. Everything's kind of uh, hanging out in the middle of Pacific Ocean, as we all know. So uh, gonna work on that. Uh, case numbers have been dropping, as everyone sees. It's actually following the, the Delta diagram that they showed us, so that, uh, good news. You know, uh, we've been single digits. I think the last, last three times I've reported, we were in the twenties. Last month, we were in the tens, and now we're in the single digits, so hopefully we're through this thing. Uh, on another note, this is kind of great news. Uh, Buffalo Peak Golf Course was awarded the Facility of the Year through the Oring Golf Association. Fantastic achievement for Buffalo Peak, our uh, pro out there, Dana London, doing a fantastic job. Great recognition for Buffalo Peak Golf Course. Just a little bit of good news that it, it's great to hear good news these days in the midst of all this that's going on. But uh, as for that, uh, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Commissioner Scarfo?
If not, yeah.
That's a good thing, Matt.
Yes, I, I, I said today in the meeting, I'd, I'd love more of that on, on our agendas. It's just good news and, yeah, anything that's not COVID related would be fantastic.
It, it, we're getting there, hopefully.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would love to have a, a time where I, don't even bring up COVID, and I just give a report on what's going on in the county and
There you go.
and the state. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, staff comments? Stu?
I'll just, I'll just keep going with the Stu theme, right?
Yeah.
We get more great news since Reginald opened the door there. We've got, we were just awarded or announced that we were awarded the, the grant to extend the Greenway Trail uh, in a loop form. Uh, we own the two adjacent properties to the east. Uh, it has to be ratified from the State Parks and Recreation Commission, but the, they don't often vary from the committee's recommendation. I think we came in third out of uh, several dozen applications for that. So we'll look forward to paving an extension trail to the dead end here next year that will make a loop and eventually landscaped areas and outdoor, outside, uh, outdoor exercise equipment. Uh, that was a really cool idea presented by a community member um, after Island City decided not to continue with their grant funding and their project. So I'm pretty excited about that.
Good. Thanks for that. Um, you know, Stu, there's a stretch, you, you know where it, um, where it wise? Um, and you come in off of, of uh, Riddle and it, it wise, and then that, so we're going down river with the extension, is that correct?
Right.
How far is that gonna go? Quarter mile?
Yeah, about 1,600 feet.
Okay.
So uh, that'll be, it'll be a big, it, it'll just be great for families that just want, I mean, you could, you can ride to the end, loop back around and ride back to the park and loop back around. You can make a little racetrack out of it. Um, it would just be better than a dead end, and I forgot to mention, some of that trail's deteriorated already on that side after that Y and in the grant, uh, we're fixing that too, so.
Yeah.
The project.
I was gonna say that there's, there's like the, my first 200 feet of that, of that trail, it's, it looks like it was put in pretty quick and it just, it just really, it really deteriorated fast.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Good, thanks, Stu. Any, uh, any other staff reports? Chief Bell?
Yes, good evening, uh, Mayor and city councilors. I just wanted to give you a, a staffing update. It's the police department. We, uh, today we have two uh, police officer vacancies that, that we are still working to fill. We actually had police officer testing today. Um, and I, it's, it's not positive news that I, I, but I do want to share with you guys, so that you understand what we're dealing with, and that is that you know, the police department is seeing the same thing that many of our, our private and other public sector employers are seeing, and that is the recruitment is really, really challenging right now, particularly in law enforcement. Uh, my counterparts around the state and region are having the same struggles, just depending upon the size of the organization, but we saw an all-time low number of applicant, applicants uh, this go, and uh, but I, I'm hopeful that, uh, you know, we're, we're certainly not interested in lowering standards in any capacity, but uh, uh, we, we had a good uh, set of candidates today and, and hopefully we'll be able to get some of those hired here soon. So I just wanted to give you an update, and to remind you, one of those vacancies was a retirement, a long time uh, patrol sergeant retired uh, late this summer, and then uh, also the news that we were awarded the Office of Violence Against Women Grant again, so we're filling that. So actually, we had two people retire uh, late summer, early fall, and so we're, we're looking to replace both of those positions.
Thank you, Chief.
You're very welcome.
Any questions for Chief Bell? All right, Kyle, I see you're lit up.
Yep, just wanted to cover a couple of things. It is my favorite time of year where we change complaints about the roads for complaints about snow removal. So we have uh, started preparing for the stormy weather. We started cleaning up uh, most of our catch spaces. You are starting to see the sweepers moving out onto the streets, so we, we haven't started the annual leaf cleanup, but we are trying to get ahead of it this year and get some of the bigger stuff out of the way so that uh, it proceeds a little quicker this time. We are going to once again try this year to do some tracking on social media when we push that leaf removal out, so people will know where we're working, and hopefully we can get some cars to move off of the streets and make it a little easier. Uh, we haven't had a lot of success, but if uh, you're getting asked questions about leaf removal, they can always refer to our Facebook page. We also try and work through Alcorn Media Group to get that stuff done. Also wanted to let you know the fleet is getting chained up in the next couple of weeks, so we will be ready. And if the winter comes that everybody keeps insisting is on its way, we will be ready to, to move some snow. We've got a, a couple of different strategies this year to see if we can uh, be a little more efficient on some of those smaller, you know, the, the not as wide roadways and the cul-de-sac, so we'll see if uh, these new strategies work out in our favor.
Thanks, Kyle. Any questions for Kyle? All right, any other staff comments? I, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, Robert, I don't know if you're gonna do this during city managers, but uh, I would just ask Timothy to, to light up and, and introduce himself in case uh, any of the councilors have not had a chance to, to meet with him. Um, I ran into him at City Hall last week, and we had a brief chat on front steps of City Hall. Uh, it's great to have him here, and he's, it sounds like he's hit the ground running, but I'll let him talk just briefly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, we've hit the ground running.
Yes.
And you're just about, uh, just over a week now, and uh, you know, first I would just like to, to commend and say thank you to all of my fellow City Hall staffers who have been incredibly welcoming and more than patient as I kind of get oriented and learn my way around, so. Um, it's uh, it's been a good team to, to come in and join. Uh, most of my work the last week and a half has really been just getting oriented. Um, spending a lot of time out on the streets on some meet and greets, uh, focusing really on uh, some of those urban renewal project partners that have recently completed projects or that are
uh, some of those urban renewal project partners that have recently completed projects or that are working on projects. Um, trying to really get out and engage with some of our other key partners. Um, I've had a couple of meetings with E O U, I've got a couple more of those. Um, had several meetings now with Main Street, uh, trying to get on top of current projects like the Ignite Center. And um, I'm really excited to be here. Um, feel like we've got a lot of potential and I'd be here to see how I can help us take La Grande where we want to be.
Thank you, Timothy. Any questions for Timothy? If you haven't had a chance to, to, to meet him face to face, make sure you get, when you're in City Hall, you pop in his office and say hello. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. City manager comments?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, with, with Timothy and Carrie uh, coming on board, uh, at the tail end of October, we're back to full strength in our directors. Uh, so excited about that, which makes life a little bit easier. So that's really great news for us. Um, the one thing that we are expecting to have happen here real shortly, uh, Commissioner Scarfo kind of alluded to it is we're expecting the federal rule on the vaccine mandate uh, in the coming days. And then once we get that, we'll uh, sort out where we go from here. Uh, saw reports so that uh, the rule could be released as early as tomorrow. So once we get that, we'll figure out what we need to do, and that's all I wanted to cover. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? We're good? How are you feeling?
I'm getting, getting better. Uh, do not recommend pneumonia, uh, so please avoid that if you have the opportunity to say no.
Okay. Take care of yourself.
I will. Thank you.
All right. Uh, I'm going to call on you in the order that I see you and then I'll wrap things up. Uh, Councilor Lillard, anything?
Yeah, I have a question. I wonder if we wanted to discuss, especially with the vaccine mandates rolling out, uh, about when we might return to in-person meetings versus the Zoom on the computer. Any thoughts on that?
I was going to bring that up and suggest maybe December, but um, I, I really am um, open to what the rest of the council. Robert, any comments?
Um, uh, one of the things that I'm looking to is whether or not there are going to be an easing of restrictions requiring indoor masks. Uh, because even if we move back into indoors, we'll all be masked up. So, you know, I think that's a factor that comes into play. Um, I'm encouraged by the, the downturn in the numbers. Um, and we'll continue to monitor that. But uh, I think the, the council's preference is if you're going to be masked to not be indoors uh, I'm sorry, to not be live, but to rather be virtual. Uh, but if you want to meet in council chambers with social distancing and masks, that's certainly an option.
Right. Okay. Anything else, Gary?
No, that's, that was all I had.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Meesner?
I don't really have anything, but I'd like to be back in live sessions without masks though. Preferably. Because if you're going to have to wear a mask, I'd rather do it here so I don't have to not stumble. I have to listen really hard to hear people because they, the masks do uh, muffle your voice.
Yes.
And I understand that the Halloween trick or treat was very successful. I was not here in town, so I didn't see it, but I understand it went very well.
There was something called trunk or treat, which is
Well, that's the trunk or treats out in the middle of the street, but yeah.
Yeah, interesting, a new concept to me. So.
Well, yes, we started it several years ago because our car club wanted to come down and we have drunks. And so I said, I heard it someplace and I suggested it and that's what we started to do it.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Counselor Howard, any comments?
No, none tonight, Steve.
Right. Counselor Glave?
Uh, just mask or no mask, I, I, I'm ready to get back in person. So.
Counselor Bozarth?
Thanks, Steve. Uh, question for Robert. Is there anything that we can do about the homeless problem at Max Square? I mean, it's an eyesore for the community. There's been a lot of problems with those people there. Is there anything that can be done? We need to address it.
Yeah, um, thank you, Counselor Bozarth. Uh, I actually got a letter late this afternoon uh, from some business owners that talked to that subject, and I've got a meeting uh, set up for next week with uh, Chief Bell and Stu, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a look at uh, what our options are. I will tell you, there, there are a number of things that, that we have been doing. This, the single biggest challenge that we have, to be very blunt about it, is our legal options are very limited. Um, and we have to make sure that, that the actions that we are taking are actions that are defensible and legal. Um, you know, the
Well, I'd mentioned, I'd mentioned to you a couple of months ago about maybe turning that into a private or dating it to a private corporation or something, uh, nonprofit, so that they could enforce it. Is that feasible, possible? Is that an option you're looking at? You never got back to me on it.
Oh, I apologize. I thought that I had. Um, I don't know that that would provide a solution for us, quite frankly, John. And the other thing that I would have to look at uh, that I haven't done is whether or not there are any deed restrictions related to that property being conveyed to the city. Um,
Well, I think it's something that we could certainly take a look at, and I would hope in your meeting that you would bring that up next week and see if it is an option. Uh, if we were to turn that over to a private corporation, they have much more latitude, say, than public landowners do. Uh, you know, maybe we could do something. I, and i- if Stu is still here and I, I voted for your fees and everything, Stu, why the hell don't we charge them 75 bucks a day for using Max Square for crying out loud? It's just terrible, horrible.
You know, on the same
That's
I have noticed a couple of areas on private properties where there seems to be an issue as well. I won't get into specifics here, but I'll send an email or something.
Yeah, thank you, Gary.
And, and you know, I'm, I'm, I noticed the people down there. Um, it seems like there's one or two that are there on a regular basis. Um, and you know, maybe drawing a crowd of, of others. Uh, a number of others. Um, I'm curious, uh, I see Chief, Chief Bell is still here. Um, are we having a lot of callouts for the individuals at the park or? I mean, are they, are they? They're, they're there, their presence is disturbing. Um, are they doing anything illegal? Are they, is it brand, is it going beyond just them being in the park?
Yeah, I honestly, I appreciate the comments and uh, Counselor Bozarth, I, I share the concerns and we, we have been you know, carrying this burden and trying to address it in as much as we can as the city manager addressed. You know, within our, our, the lea- the legal environment that, that we have been handed. This is not a local legal environment, quite frankly. I've communicated with chiefs, uh, you know, statewide, uh, from Astoria to the Dalles and other like-sized communities and I, I, it's probably not lost on all of you that um, there, most cities are dealing with the very same social issues, quite frankly. And, and I, I'm sorry to tell you that, that we have not escaped that, but um, the answer to your question, Mayor, is um, we're not getting as many calls for service, but I think some of that is because some people are kind of getting accustomed to seeing that. They don't like it, but they see it. Um, the calls for service that we get where there are actually crimes or violation of park rules that are occurring, we can deal with those. And those are, those are ways that we uh, are able to address the issue. Uh, I'll share with you that um, late this summer, early fall, we actually had went, we were using our city ordinance and we uh, had trespassed an individual and then later arrested that individual for being there in violation of the trespass order. And uh, that case uh, cycled through our local circuit court and it was dismissed. Uh, so um, I, I, I am a fixer and a solution finder and I'm all ears and I have information. But the fact is that law enforcement, this is a much larger issue than, than law enforcement, quite frankly. And there's a lot of tools that we, we don't have in our toolbox anymore to fix some of these social issues. Ballot Measure 110, we're seeing some, we, we all know about ballot measure 110. And we are actually seeing some of the things that many of us were concerned about that, that could potentially come about. And so um, I'm sorry that it's not positive news and I can't tell you that I'll have this fixed by Monday, but uh, it, it's, it's a very complex issue and I can assure you that we're on it. But I, I I'm here, I met with a, a local business owner yesterday and visited with them for a lengthy period of time and I, I, I'm committed to provide information and education to uh, you know, our business group in downtown because the rules and laws that apply on public property versus private property are very different. Uh, if private property owners, I mean, and all, all the statutory law and rules that that have always existed there to apply, you know, whether it's trespass or disorderly conduct, criminal mischief theft. Uh, those still apply. And so I, I think that uh, we, we can work harder to get people educated and in the know on what we can do to help them in those regards. So uh, the public property thing, it's, it's, it's very challenging. Uh, if you're interested in taking a look at it, uh, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals case, Martin versus Boise from 2018 is really where it was all born from. And then there was a, a Grants Pass case uh, later than that, and uh, both of those cities uh, you know, lost some civil lawsuits and, and there's some binding uh, law. And then uh, most recently, our legislative session, uh, it was House Bill 3115 that has created law in Oregon that uh, basically is codifying those, those uh, appellate or that, that, that case law. So uh, if you have any more, I see I got a couple of questions here.
Yeah. Go ahead. We'll go with uh, Mary Ann first and then Dave.
Oh, I, I think Dave was first though. He had his hand up first.
Dave, go ahead.
So I know that we, we have a policy on smoking, I think that I'm aware of in our public parks. Is that correct? It, is that not in place for Max Square? And if not, is there anything that would prevent us from doing that? Because every time I've been there, there's people smoking. So I, I wonder if that wouldn't be some at least minor deterrent.
It is, it is a, a park rule, absolutely. And you know, the police have park rules uh, at their disposal. And I know, like Gary alluded to, they've, they've had some of those interactions and not been successful at the court level. So like he said, it's, it's complicated.
Sounds like that's already been tried then. Okay.
Mary Ann?
Yeah, I was just wondering, can't we put a rule in that says no overnight staying? You know, like a lot of camp, I mean, a lot of places on the road, you have those pullouts, you have those turnouts that say no overnight camping, no staying overnight. We can't, we can't do that in our pub, public areas like that.
My, and, and Chief Bell could probably speak to this more, but the way I understand it is that you can't restrict somebody from camping in a public park. Unless, unless you provide an area specifically for them to camp. And I think that's, that I, Chief, am I, am I got the gist of it right?
Mayor, you do have the gist of it. Uh, it really is specific to homelessness. And what the courts ruled is that if a person is involuntarily homeless, then you can't criminalize their uh, need to be able to rest, lie down, or sleep in a public space. Um, and so that, that really is so, uh, we, Mary Ann, we have those rules and have, and then most communities, municipalities uh, entities of government have had the specific ordinance that addresses what you're talking about, and we have that and we have for years. But the danger in the last, you know, year and a half, two years that we have all been dealing with is the risk that we take when there has been binding court decisions made that if we enforce those rules that lead to creating uh, criminality as a result of that, then we're subject to lawsuit. And so now, out of this latest legislative session, it's House Bill 3115, it has actually codified that into Oregon law. And so it's changed the environment and, and it's really making it very difficult for us to um, you know, to be, excuse me, meet the needs of, you know, the community and uh, it, it's, it's just very challenging. And it certainly is not due to lack of desire, lack of effort. It's, it's just, I, I, the, the meeting that the city manager talked about next week, and honestly, uh, the city of Medford, I just got it through the Chiefs Association. Um, I think it was September 16th, the city of Medford adopted a new city ordinance uh, post uh, House Bill um, 3115 and the Boise decision. Um, to my knowledge, it hasn't been tested, but we are all going to be in a situation where we're going to have to to amend and revamp our, our ordinances to make sure that they're in line with these new laws.
Well, can we, can we, is it lawful for us to set a location that they can go and that's the only place they can go? Or can you not do that? Because I mean, I
Yeah, that's really what, what, what really has come out of these decisions is terminology and I'm sorry, I'm not a lawyer, but
Yeah.
that it, it's a reasonable to standard. And the, the trouble with a lot of times court decisions, they do this and, but it, it doesn't give us an actual definition of what that means. And so we end up having to test this. And so we all, I mean, we, the Chiefs Association has a committee that we're working on this. Uh, because we're all in the same boat. We're, we're, it's not just the city of La Grande. I know that that doesn't help because it's, it's our community that is, is dealing with this, but uh, I can assure you that um, you know, this is felt, uh, you know, collectively and, and we're working on it. And I know that that shouldn't just satiate you. Um, because I think we need public engagement and I think part of that is the education component so that you know, our, our downtown, our business uh, owners and, and people are aware that it's not just going, you know, unattended, you know, and that we're working on this. And and I, I want to also throw out there that we have better working relationships with our uh, resource partners locally than in, in my 28 years of experience here than we, we've ever had. Uh, I was just talking to somebody earlier today and I truly believe that we have more resources locally for people than, than we ever have had. But we also have a myriad of issues that uh, I've, it's different and, and more profound than I've ever seen in my entire career as, as a law enforcement official. So um, you know, the, the substance abuse disorder, behavioral health issues. Um, uh, you guys know this, but
Yeah.
thi- this is, it's not, it, these issues are all part of what we're, we're discussing here. And it's, it's very, very challenging. And and I, I, I'm, I, I would already have fixed it if I could have just done it like that for you folks. I hope that you understand that, but
Yes.
uh, we're, we're going to work on it and, and I hope that uh, you guys are willing to help us out and, and support along the way.
Thank you. Well
Thank you, Gary.
Yeah, we, we thank you much and, and understand it. Um, I, you and I are the kind of people like to fix things and, and it's frustrating when we can't um, because, but particularly with the really complicated things. I thought I saw Counselor Lillard have his, had his hands up and give him an opportunity to, to speak.
Well, probably isn't too necessary. Now, I was just going to comment that uh, my understanding of the new law is that if you don't have a place to put a certain percentage of homeless indoors, maybe something over half, then that's where you're really stuck at that point. Uh, it's basically a carte blanche as far as public property and I don't know how correct that, but that was my understanding of it.
Yeah, again, I don't know the nuances, but I, I, I thought that's, we, we couldn't, you can't restrict them from some places if you don't have a place for them to go. So that's, that makes a difference.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not as simple as saying that the only place that they can sleep outdoors is X. It has to be providing indoor housing opportunities.
Right, right.
On that note, do we have any timeline for the warming station, which might help?
I think they open on the 15th of November.
Um, all right, I'm going to bring us back into wrapping this up. Uh, Counselor Rock, do you have any comments?
No, I'm gonna, thank you.
Okay. Uh, and before we go, um, you know, we hear a lot of bad news, uh, uh, unfortunately, all the time. And um, I'm, I'm trying to strike a more positive note with things. Um, in the last uh, I'm working on a little side project you're all aware of and, and I'm going to keep it, I'm going to keep it on the down low and, until it's, it's over, but um, you're all invited to, to join me on my, on my little meetings that I've been having. It's been insightful for me. Um, but it doesn't stop with our city employees. Um, we have uh, a lot of commissions and we have a lot of people that put a tremendous amount of effort. a lot of people that put a tremendous amount of effort into this, into these commissions. The art commissions we heard about today was, is just one of them. But I wanted, I wanted to point out one person I'm known for, probably since I've moved here. And I see him on and off. And I know he's got a tremendous amount of energy and, and, and he's, he's getting older like the rest of us. So I think he's stepping down from the Parks and Rec Board. But I'm just gonna call him out. I'm, I'm, don't know that if he's online or not, but Mark Gomez has been a Park and Recs Commission member for 13 years. That doesn't sound like very long really, but I think he worked on park stuff and definitely the veterans pool stuff for a lot longer than 13 years. And it's, it's guys like Mark who've had a passion for our parks and for our pool that we need to thank for their service and, and appreciate them for what they've done. And when this came up to me, this, this, when this information came forward to me about Mark, it struck me as perhaps we need to do this more often with our commission members. So I encourage the staff members and directors that are involved with specific commissions, that if they know of somebody on a commission, to shoot me an email. And, you know, I have no qualms at all making this sort of a regular thing to thank people for the service that they provide through volunteer time and, and the commitment to the community. So thanks, Mark. Your time and effort for our parks and pools have been greatly appreciated. And I know that there are more of you out there who, who do this and your time is also appreciated. That's all I have. As soon as we hear from the governor about dropping the mask mandate, baby, we're back into live sessions as far as I'm concerned. With that, I adjourn our regular session for November and I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.